So I might take a stab at just doing a quick overview to Europe. And you know, just kind of touch on some of the stuff that's outside the literal comp plan that are assumed mixed use zoning, you know, density increase, neighborhood residential density increase for eating rooms and duplexes to address, I guess, those house bills, things like that. And I mean, who knows where I'll go with it. I might. On the news, I guess.
I just read that I thought I'd say too many things.
Progress.
Reminds me I just had to do mine. Good evening. Welcome to study session October fourteenth. Mary, do you want to please?
Councilmember much.
Here.
Councilmember spirit.
Here.
Councilmember of the board.
Here.
There is.
Here.
Let me down Sherman.
Here.
Councilmember of the staff.
Here.
Councilmember of the.
Here.
Thank you, Mary. Tonight's study session is a study session is about the conference plan in term of economic development director Jason Doz has special DJ alliance. Peter Project Andrew Kirsten Peterson and more information for us. That was a mouthful, Mary.
Is it interim? Yeah, you said interim, right?
Yes. I'm not promoting you, okay?
That's oh, no, I wouldn't wish that on me. Um, thank you. So we're here tonight to, you know, basically our consultant here Kirsten has a PowerPoint presentation for you, but I just want to kind of kind of introduce all the paper you received. I guess you receive it digitally, you know, because it was a fairly big packet. It's not the the sea change you might think in the comp plan. I mean, generally speaking, we're kind of carrying most land uses forward. I think Kirsten has it in her presentation, but there are some, you know, works going on at the state level that are requiring we do some density increases. It namely in our residential zones. Um, there's a house bill. I'm just kind of giving you this information because it'll be like a rider to some of the concepts we're going to talk to you about that are. We're hoping to go into the plan. Um, our neighborhood residential zone, there's a, there's a house bill that got floated a couple of years ago that's going to require us to up the density by allowing more accessory dwelling units on, on, in our residential zones, which, which we've kind of. Kind of led the charge, so to speak, in a sense, because we did this a number of years ago, two, three years ago, we didn't we?
Four or five.
Was it that long ago? The older I get, the quicker, we're having so much fun, just the time goes by so quickly. Um, we did increase the density in our residential zone to allow duplexes and triplexes in more places. We allow ADUs outright on any residential lot currently. Um, some of the changes I'm anticipating you'll see in the new year, provided, you know, the comp plan gets adopted, all this stuff would come as a, as a follow on. Um, are an allowance for fourplexes in our residential zones. Um, I don't know exactly what that would look like yet, but that will be offering up. Um, we'll have to comply with some of the state law requirements, allow more ADUs. We got to figure out a way to make that work with our design standards. Our very small lot sizes now. Um, we're, we want to increase density in the mixed use zone to at least match, if not exceed, the neighborhood residential zone. So the neighborhood residential zone, in theory, that's our bread and butter, so to speak. It's most of the acreage within city limits. Believe it or not, it allows for higher density inherently now because of the changes we made a few years ago than the mixed use does. So we'll be looking to increase density there and allow for duplexes and triplexes more explicitly in that zone. Because right now that zone has just a dwelling units per acre limit. And you can do a duplex on a 6,000 square foot lot in the neighborhood residential zone. You can't do duplex on a 6,000 square foot lot in a mixed use zone. And the mixed use zone is the higher density zone. So it's things like this, we're going to correct moving forward. What you're going to hear from Kirsten here and is in the, the land use map that I just gave you larger copies of than, than were in your packet. Um, are we, we are proposing to bring back the multifamily zone. Now, this would apply primarily in areas that already have multifamily housing. The intent of that is, as George knows, for like existing multifamily uses in our neighborhood residential zone, you have to go through a, a kind of a belabored planning development process to expand. And that, you know, you've, you've got a multifamily facility there. Our thought is if we develop some regulations, make it easier for people to expand them with design standards, you know, that, that address compatibility and those sorts of things. That that would be a good move because in 1995, when the city adopted its first growth management comprehensive plan, we, for some reason, poof, eliminated our multifamily zones. We had them at one point. Most of these facilities you see that are built in town were in the multifamily zone. We want to bring that back to allow them to redevelop, further develop, what have you. Um, there's also a few areas on the south end of town and the northeast end of town where, where we are proposing some vacant land designation of multifamily uses. That isn't meant to physically change the zoning. The way I envision that working is more is like an overlay zone where you can still do single family if that's what you want to do. But we would also have regulations that if you keep the parcel as a larger piece, you could do different types of multifamily, be it townhouses, genuine multifamily apartments, cottage housing. And you, you would again, see all this in the future, next year, if, if these things pass in the comprehensive plan. Some of the other, I suppose. Not big changes, but we, we want to kind of separate out the north end commercial district, you know, where you have Walmart, Fred Meyer, the, the 101 and Wallace Neeland interchange. And designate it what is called in the plan, a regional retail overlay. And the, the intent there is largely to make it easier and more specific to build your bigger commercial facilities out there where you have highway access. You have, uh, you know, Wallace Neeland, a major, major arterial up there. And then distinguish that from our, our general commercial zone, which is the bulk of the rest of the commercial areas along Olympic Highway North and South. Because they really act more like a, you know, kind of a, a smaller scale neighborhood-ish type commercial district, if that makes sense. So we want to kind of distinguish the two, maybe lessen parking requirements along Olympic Highway North and South, because that's keeping a lot of people from developing further on their commercial properties. And then keep those parking requirements for what are presumably going to be the bigger draw, you know, large retailers. Um, you're going to hear too, in Kirsten's presentation about residential target areas. We've, what we've proposed are a couple of target areas, one in the north end of town, one in the midsection, kind of in the valley here. And, uh, the mayor's got, it's, it's on the smaller aerial photograph that show the two areas. The intent of that isn't necessarily to change zoning per se, because you can do multifamily in those zones already. In our general commercial zone, you can do it on upper floors with a conditional use permit. In our CRV and mixed use and downtown, you can do them, you know, either outright or on upper floors, like in the downtown. But we don't see a lot of that stuff occurring, a lot of redevelopment or anything, in, in part due to the costs. What these target areas would do if, if they're adopted is then allow us to adopt in the future, this again would come after the comp plan, a, what is it called? The multifamily tax exemption? Uh, it, it's basically a zoning ordinance we would apply to these districts that would then allow property owners that do want to do some sort of multifamily, if they meet certain parameters for affordability and types of housing, they can apply for and receive tax breaks on that to, you know, and it, the timeline varies depending on the price point. It's, I'm not an expert on it, but I've, uh, been reading a bit on it in the last couple of months when, when our, you know, we had some staff changes. So I do apologize for the, you know, we've kind of wheeled back, slowed down our process a little bit. And now I think we had planned on bringing this to you in October, or I'm sorry, it's August, September. And now we're midway through October, bringing it to you. I just wanted to wheel back and make sure I understood some of these things that were being proposed, you know, so. With, I think I kind of touched on the major stuff that's being proposed, but with that, I would like to introduce Kirsten. She's been in this process for a majority of the time through staff changes and everything. I appreciate that.
Yeah.
Um, she'll be walking you through a PowerPoint presentation. She's.
See if it works. And I, I appreciate you guys having me back because I got to attend your last meeting. Oh, boy, let's see. My, my Zoom thing is blocking me starting it. Okay. So basically Jason gave us a good introduction to some of the things that are going to come forward. And it's to kind of get your minds mulling over it. You're going to need to make some decisions eventually, but some of the things we're proposing are not like concrete. They're to help you make decisions in the future. Um, this PowerPoint, the first slides are the same that you saw last time. Um, I'll probably go past them quickly, but I also thought it might be good to just kind of do a reminder of some of the requirements from the state and anybody in the audience. And then, you know, your staff has it if they want to put it online, which they probably won't want to. Um, let's see if this will work or not. It is just lagging here.
Yeah, that's nice afraid of.
Okay, well, oh, there we go. Okay.
It'll be a little bit of lag up there too.
Okay.
That's natural.
All right. Yeah. So as you pointed out, we've had a steering committee working on the comp plan. Um, your council member Gutierrez and the mayor have both been at most of those meetings. It's been really helpful, a lot of good feedback in overtime. And, and he pointed out, I joined the S U J team in May of last year, so I got in on it a little bit later. You guys had already done some of your public outreach activities, et cetera. So I'm basically just going to remind you of some of the state requirements. And, um, what we're going to be looking at today is just the four of the elements. So reminder, comp plans have to be updated every 10 years. It gets really rigorous with what the state requires. And it used to be every eight years. They changed it to 10, but now there's a five year periodic check in, like a progress report essentially for implementation.
To see what that.
Yeah, it's new. So we're like, oh, on one hand, we're thinking we have more time, but not really. They've shrunk it to five years. And so hopefully it's just really mini version. So we do really need to address the, the population growth, um, both for the land use and housing chapters. It really affects what's going to happen with capital facilities. Um, you did see capital facilities at your last, the last time we met. And we've already made edits to it since, just based on meetings we've had with Public Works Department, Jay Harris and Aaron Nix. And so we're just, you guys have a lot of really great things going on. We just want to make sure we're planning appropriately. Uh, we got a trap, it was a travel demand model was finished up recently. The transportation element um, relies on a lot of this information too, with how we're going to be growing and where to plan the impacts to the roads, et cetera. So.
If I can, I can add one thing. As far as capital facilities go, you know, water sewer, planning for growth, that those sorts of things there. This plan isn't like recreating the wheel. It's informed by the water sewer comp plans that, you know, have been through rigorous review by public works by the council. Um, this is just kind of summarizing it and trying to.
It really, this plan relies on those plans being kept up to date. And I actually want to compliment this community because I've worked for some, like as staff that just didn't really keep up on them. They put it off for too long. But really, it, you want to update those plans anywhere from 10 to 15 years, whether it's wastewater, water, stormwater. So a lot of great documents already in place, but we pull from like your 20 year forecasting. And then you guys are already required to update your TIP every six, well, the six year TIP is updated every year. Um, that way, if you're planning ahead for growth and you think that you're going to need to do some intersection improvements here within the six year horizon, if something changes and you need to shift the years around, it's already technically in the six years, you might just shift the year. But you're eligible for grant funding and it just shows that you're planning proactively. Um, but putting it all in a one larger document as a comp plan, it just keeps everything consistent, making sure you're looking at it holistically, how you need to grow and plan and budget for your, uh, the future of your community. So there are several house bills. Jason kind of touched on some of them that we needed to make sure we addressed with this plan. House Bill 1220 is one of the biggest deals where you have to plan for accommodate housing for all income levels, including emergency housing and shelters. Already talked about them extending our cycle to 10 years instead of eight. Um, House Bill 1717 is about strengthening tribal consultation during the planning processes. And then 5828 and several others are just talking about options and methods for how you can reduce barriers to housing production. You hear complaints all the time about red tape and these things that the government interferes with, but a lot of times it's really intended like, let's slow down just a little bit, make sure that we understand how new development is going to impact a city, a county, and who's going to pay for it. It's one thing to say, just let the developer build those 200 lots without thought for, well, what's that going to do to the streets? Or even as you keep doing that for the schools, are, are they going to need to build a new school parks and all the utilities?
Yeah. And this, this comp plan, as I said, wouldn't necessarily address directly these things, but.
Set the goals and.
Yeah, we have to write it with these in mind. And then there's going to be, uh, you know, a lot of stuff coming, probably well after the new year for zoning changes, probably for the next year or so. You'll be tired of seeing us coming forward with zoning changes to, you know, basically comply with a lot of this stuff. But this sets the stage for compliance with it.
And this final house bill I referenced, 1181, is requiring governments to plan for climate change impacts. And so that is one of the chapters that was included. And we are looking at it more as like, what are your assets in your community and what are the hazards that you should plan for that kind of go along with your hazard mitigation plan? We're not really calling it, um, climate change. We don't want it to be about fear, just like, oh, do we know that we have flooding in the downtown area and how do we, um, um, plan for that and mitigate? Um, you know, and talking to the steering committee about the actual events that you could experience in the shelter community. So.
Like an interesting discussion at the committee revolved around hot, dry spells, you know, it's now all of a sudden it's, people are buying the little floor air conditioners. I mean, I, when I first moved here, it, you had a hot spell for a couple of days, you know, and that was like, woof, glad we got through that. Now it can last for a week or better. And then, you know, maybe you get a couple of day cooldown, then it's hot again. So I mean, it's, there were, there were certain things in my mind that I thought were priorities that as we discussed it at the committee, it's like, oh, I didn't really think about that. We're totally unprepared for heat. We can handle rain for the most part. We can handle flooding and we kind of know where to expect it to go. Those were the priorities in my mind, but then, you know.
Yeah, the heat thing, you know, a lot of communities are experiencing that now. Do we have a cooling shelter somewhere that we can invite people? I don't know about you guys, if you do, but like you have this nice big open area where if you needed to open it, you could. Some communities don't have a building of this sort. And then you got people that are suffering from heat stroke and other conditions. So.
It's things like that for the climate element. It's looking very broad stuff.
And so what we were just discussing was how this plan is really meant to inform by creating the policies that will guide future regulations themselves. So um, development regulation updates will likely come in the form of making sure that we, you know, change some of the uses allowed in different zoning districts. And the requirements for achieving compliance with those, other plans may need to be updated. And then the critical areas ordinance also is required to be updated. And then, um, this other one, that's a requirement, development near designated resource lands must not interfere with or continue to use. So that is touched on. We haven't spent a lot of time.
That one's fuzzy to me, but yeah, figure that out, what that means.
Um, and then with your urban growth area, you guys have a pretty healthy urban growth area. So, you know, we've mapped it. We've been having a lot of discussions with Jason and the team. And so we have to make sure that between the city limits and the urban growth area, you have enough land available to accommodate your projected housing growth. So that's where today's chapter's land use, housing really look at what those projections are and how you're going to accommodate for the growth. And do you have enough land? And then a lot of jurisdictions, if they're like more of an urban center and they're told, you know, like looking at the studies and like how many people are moving and they have to fit so many people in, they're running out of land. So that's one of the reasons they're getting more creative with making communities allow, say, two units per lot. We're going taller. We're not at that stage here in Shelton yet. We, we found there's enough land within the urban growth area, but there's still some mandates about. You know, you, you do need to allow the two units per lot kind of thing. And.
Yeah, we, we have more than enough land to accommodate the growth projections. It's the, the bigger challenge in my view are the way the numbers were split out between city and county for multifamily housing. We're woefully in arrears on multifamily housing. So that's why the residential target areas, that's why we're, we're going to, you know, try to implement multifamily zoning. I think we're going to have our single family allotment covered in the very near term. This, this, this is prepping to be one of the, um, first times since I've worked here that we may very well meet, even exceed our growth targets by the time we're updating this thing again.
Some targets, you know, we're doing our best. We're following a methodology the state created. Because they want to make sure communities plan ahead, but I mean, who knows, some developer might come in and do some massive thing you weren't expecting, or maybe nothing happens and you're like, oh.
Have to. Does it affect us when we have one developer holding a thousand acres, not developing it when it's so in residential, commercial and residential, I believe.
Well, I think that's been occurring and you've been holding for years. I think if you start trying to figure out a plan around that.
Yeah. Doesn't affect, you know, our, our inventory stock, knowing that he may or they may or may not ever build on it.
Well, you know, one of the things that may help that property be a little more enticing is depending on the way we craft the, um, regional retail zone, uh, you know, allow it to be a little more permissive for larger structures. The, the way our design standards are written right now in our, in our catchall general commercial, it, it, uh, it's, I think it's a little tougher to build larger buildings because it takes into account the fact that a lot of our commercial zones are very condensed right next to residential neighborhoods. They don't necessarily address the fact that we've got a huge swath of raw commercial land up there on the west side of the highway. So it, it might, where am I going with that? How does that impact us? If, if, if the owner doesn't want to develop, they're not going to develop. I mean, there's, I don't think there's much we can do to force them to, but what we can do is make it so enticing that they'll either do it themselves or sell it, make a profit, sell it to somebody who will develop it.
Yeah. And you already know, you're in a unique position where Shelton is the only incorporated area in this massive, pretty rural county. A lot of the other counties don't have the same situation. So typically you're able to like plan for population growth for the whole county and then kind of disperse it. And it's not always accurate, but here Shelton's having to take on a bulk of the, the multifamily type growth. You've got Allen and Belfer, which can take some, but I mean, there's just nowhere else that really has urban services needed, like all the infrastructure to hook up to.
And one, one, one of the challenges we're trying to start working on, we've been talking with county staff, is making the city and county standards, especially as it relates to roadways, roadway access with the utilities more compatible. So as the county approves development in the UGA, you know, there are some areas that I, I scratch my head as to how we would ever take over and you know, manage that as a city facility, because it just, they don't meet our standards for access.
It's always challenging.
You know, so on a moving forward basis, we're going to try to make that much more, uh, uh, what do you want to say? Compatible with one another. So it's.
Back on the mayor's point, a lot of our land that's in the UGA is, has a pollution history that we cannot really build there without knowing the long effects of residence. We do decide to put residential there. Um, I'm just talking specifically about the C Street landfill and the Kings Lake area. Um, so those are two large areas that we could hopefully get, get in the future, but what would we do with that? Um, if we know that there's a pollution history there that might affect any development that's on there. So that's something I think we should think about and look at in the future.
Yeah.
Start cleaning up these areas or, or start, have a study session on what we can do with previously polluted areas that are not necessarily residential, but can it be something that could still be recreational or something that doesn't make, make us spend a lot of time there, but just a little bit of time there. So we don't get a lot of exposure. So anyway, that's just something that, um, we talked about a lot during our comprehensive city planning with, with our, our groups. So I, I just thought that maybe we could put something, a paragraph or something in, in there about regeneration for different sites.
Yeah, we could look at some brownfield grants, some language that would support going after those kinds of things. Uh, you maybe, I don't know if your council has discussed those in the past, but there are grant opportunities for jurisdictions to go after to clean up those polluted sites.
Back in commission days, it didn't pass. But I mean, the landfill itself was mitigated. There's test wells there now. So yeah.
It's.
But the, but the lake is owned by these corporations and nobody's pushing them to plan that.
Well, quite frankly, what happens usually in a community is that the easy land to develop gets developed first. And it's not till you've run out where somebody's willing to like tackle the, all right, do we want to try to develop this because there's no more land? I'm working in a community that has, um, it's got a huge superfund site. And they've been working for years with the EPA and the Department of Ecology, trying to clean it up. And it just takes a long time to get that to a place where it's okay for human habitation.
You have to have a willing property owner, to some extent too. You can certainly force their hand, but the, but the property owner ultimately has some say in what happens on their property. Yeah, the, as an example, the community I worked for before I came here, very similar to Shelton, they had a, a polluted property along their waterfront. And when, for the last couple of years I was working there, we had started doing a reuse plan for the property. We were starting to do assessments on the amount of contamination on the site. And here we are 25, 20 years on. There's still, we're, the property owner isn't exactly a willing partner. So they're still working on very slowly, cleaning up small portions and converting this 400 plus acre site into beneficial reusable site for the city. And it's, you know, we're 20 years on. At the time when we started that plan, I would have thought by now it'd be double in the size of the city, but it, it can take a very long time.
Oh, yeah. Working a few of those. Another quick thing on here was that we mentioned this last time, we were talking about these chapters today though, that you previously had a separate standalone chapter for the UGA. And now we've just kind of blended it into the land use chapter. So it's longer and it just goes together.
It made sense because they were very redundant between the two of them. And frankly, you just kind of forgot about the UGA chapter. A lot of times you're like, oh yeah, you know, got to flip back there and read the goals and policy. So now it's in one place. Now you need to work through.
Yeah. And this is one that's, um, just kind of showing what the anticipated growth projection is by 20, both 2044 and 2050. We only have to plan for 20 years, but some of the studies that were done just kind of took us out to 2050. So we put both numbers in there. So just wanted to give you that data. But the chapters themselves delve a lot more into what it means to have to grow that much. Um, like the things we've just been talking about. Um, and as you can see on here, it starts with 1980, where you had a population of 7629, and then it dropped in 1990. And then it's just progressively gone up slowly over the years. Um, and then this is another one that brings into play very relevant with the two chapters, um, housing and land use today. But this is where we had done the housing needs assessment for countywide and for the city. And we also separated out the, the Belfer UGA's, kind of trying to figure out how to allocate your projected population increase to the projected housing units. And so essentially you're getting. Allocate your projected population increase to the projected housing units. And so essentially you're getting forty-one percent share of the total housing needs. And that's what we talked about, how you're, you're getting a little bit more of that multifamily because you've got the urban services that could allow for that. You have the fancy new water treatment or a wastewater treatment plant. So. Um, maybe if you could get more units in there to help start paying in towards it, that would be desirable from what I've heard. Um, so that's another one there. So the mandatory elements are land use and housing, which we keep referencing with those income based allocations. Capital facilities and utilities, transportation, economic development, parking rack. And then you have the additional ones of historic preservation and shoreline and those ones, um, you already had, they're pretty minimal. They, they didn't change really. We're not even bringing the shoreline one because it's just the same.
The, the shoreline element basically regurgitates the goals and policies in our shoreline master.
Yeah, and we just simply referenced the most current shoreline master program. My goodness, this keeps getting in my way. Okay, so some of the priorities. Uh, is how we would accommodate projected growth through infill. And mixed use development. And part of that's what we'll get into in more detail with what like Jason was talking about with these maps. Um, always want to maintain the community character that came out as very important. People live here for a reason. They love it. They don't want it to become. Even just driving around to the other side of the, um, peninsula. Update infrastructure planning and the capital facilities and utilities elements. And then make sure there's consistency with Mesa County's countywide planning policies. And since we're working on their plan, we've been able to, uh, make sure we coordinate pretty well on that. So today we do have. Land use, transportation, I'm just, I just have a couple of slides, but you didn't actually get anything in your packet for that. Um, housing. Historic preservation and climate resiliency. I think we're gonna end up spending most of our time on. Uh, land use and housing, but just wanted to briefly go over what was in your packet and those are available online. This is really just an introduction, but if you do have any feedback, just as we're talking, we'll. We'll take it into consideration. The last slide is really about next steps because we're still to the point where we're presenting you pretty near complete drafts. Um, but we want to make sure there's basically. Approval to like initiate what the, there's a sixty day growth management or commerce.
Yeah.
Review.
Part of the process requires a. What's, what I'll be coming to your next meeting asking you for is to, uh, basically adopt a resolution that authorizes staff to initiate what's called the. Notice of intent to adopt. It's, it's a process at the state whereby we supply them with. Basically the same thing we're providing you. Draft elements of our comprehensive plan. We'll give them a narrative about generally speaking, what's in it, what's changed. They spread it out to a bevy estate agencies who are all gonna look over our shoulder and make sure we're complying with like these, these house bills and senate bills and. Some of the legal requirements that you have to do for planning. So it's, uh. You know, kind of a short timeframe, but I, the only reason I bring that up now is because next week, when I, when I'll be asking you formally for that. It by no means ties you to approving this. It just allows us to start the process. There may very well be big changes. Depending on what comments we get that from Fish and Wildlife, from the, the tribes, from, uh, farmers, ecology, you know, they're all gonna look at it and they're. They're all looking at it through a different.
Wash that's very interested.
Wash that is very interested. That's, that, that is part of the reason the transportation element is taking a little longer. Um. We're almost to the point where we can meet with them again. I was just reading some emails this afternoon before the meeting. So, uh. Um, everything's going fine, but Wash that just wants to make sure that especially since we're, we were able to use this regional transportation model. That takes into account our adjacent counties, what this county is doing. It's going to be a much more accurate, you know, kind of assessment of. What development over here might do to the Wallace Nealon interchange. You know, these are things we haven't really been able to assess before. So.
Well, it's been interesting. We had a meeting with Wash shot back in March and they had some newer staff there that were getting familiarized with Shelton, Mesa County and. We have fortunately, um, a transportation fire that's been doing this for decades, knows it really well. Um, we were really just waiting on the travel demand model. And honestly, the chapter's almost complete. We're just waiting on a few more goals and policy. Um, and financing things from.
From our staff.
Public works, which is fine, but, uh, Wash that when we met with them before. They want to make sure we are aware of the requirements and we were, but they also were trying to talk about. Getting assistance with some improvements that are really outside the city's jurisdiction. And so we're able to push back a little and explain.
Over by Olympia, as a matter of fact. I, it's, I wasn't involved in the meetings, but when I hea- heard about it, I might have.
Yeah.
I might have mentioned an expletive and what are you talking about?
Yeah, so we're able to like inform like what's happening in the city and the urban growth areas and within the county. And we're willing, it's good to share the data. We had to, uh, Thurston Regional Planning Council do the travel demand model, which is helpful because they're connected. We can like figure out how it's all coordinated. So that will be.
It's really going to be a much more accurate assessment for, and it'll, it'll take into account, um. Like UGA growth, which right now it, it kind of goes untracked. So we're, we're working with the county too to hopefully account for some of that because. County growth impacts city streets, make no mistake about it. Um, and we've, that's, that's been lost in previous years and we're trying to. Hopefully capture it and assess it and help mitigate it.
And the transportation element is so.
Yes, so about transportation, long-term, big vision things. Um, our airport industrial zone. Um, where are we at? I know we were in the top six or something of having maybe a FedEx. I don't know, something going on there. Um, and if that happens, what's the traffic? Impact's going to be to that. What are, we leverage that to, to improve one-on-one and the Wallace Nealon interchange for that future growth? If the airport does happen, um. So I'm just thinking, you know, long-term is our, where are we in that lo- step process for the airport? Is that gonna happen? Should we talk to the Port Commission, the EDC, or who, who else is involved with this, um, airport? Um, district.
I, I, I know this, this study about another regional commercial airport was discussed and they had some preferred, preferred options. But it was not Sanderson Field. It came out of somewhere like South Thurston County, I believe. It was one of the preferred options. I think that got scrapped by the. By the committee and group that was working for, working on that. Certainly. Was doing that study, at least the sighting study, um, is much different than when you actually go through the feasibility study and start looking at the environmental impacts. The impacts of community, including traffic and things like that. So, as far as I know, in my conversations with Wendy Smith at the, at the, uh. Port of Shelton and give me a few of the EDC, there's, there hasn't been any further discussions about expansion of any commercial activities to that extent at. Anything big on that side of the field would trigger some kind of work on that interchange to begin with. Anything big over there with halls that would.
Oh.
That would trigger that to, that by somebody's state or.
So there's an E I, there's an EIS attached to, um, Hall Equities property that was developed in twenty.
Eleven.
Eleven.
Yeah.
Certainly needs to be updated, but much of that required, yeah.
Yeah.
Transportation improvements, particularly, um. Wallace Nealon Boulevard across the overpass into Olympic Highway North Wallace Nealon Boulevard intersection. That's one thing we talked about with our legislators about a week ago is focusing on that intersection instead of spring and Wallace. Moving it back to the intersection because the failures that are happening now, because that could not only improve the, improve the. The function of that intersection, but also alleviate maybe some of the im- impacts. The mitigation that the Hall Equities development might have to incur with their development and could be one of those things that we've talked about and spurring. Them moving along with some development on that side if we can, uh, work with Wash dot to improve that intersection.
Yeah, that exit has big giant grooves that you turn right with like, whoa.
Yeah.
Your car like, whoa, like.
Wash that actually has ownership of the west side of that intersection. So, um, that's been. I don't know when that was installed, a number of years ago, I was around, um, but. Yeah, so, and that's one of the city's hesitations is it doesn't function appropriately. There's failures there. And Wash that doesn't want to maintain ownership of that because it's in the city limits, but. The city stance is until you bring it up to standard, and again, as we talked about with our delegation is. Let's get Wash out to the table. If they're willing to put some equity into that, make some fixes, we might have the possibility to put some equity into that at the same time. It not only fixes that intersection right now and the functionality there, but again. It's something that might not, that may not have to be mitigated depending on what kind of development happens on the other side of the highway.
I didn't want to scare everyone like. Yeah, it's like the, you know, Yellowstone that. One show where everyone's talking about an airport, everyone's up against it and who was benefiting on it. Anyway, I guess Shelton, Yellowstone, anyway. Um, thank you for.
Yeah.
The status is.
Good, good discussions. Um, I had already moved on to the next slide, which was just a reminder again of what was the same and was different about the table of contents. From your twenty seventeen version versus this one. So we'd moved the urban growth area from chapter ten and. Incorporated it into chapter two. And then chapter ten will be now the climate change and resiliency chapter. So. So this land use one, it's kind of a pretty big deal. This is where we get into these maps that Jason's been talking about. She didn't have a. Um, the ability to put it on a.
I probably could have. Um, I mean, you, they've got, I didn't realize you were gonna make copies of the same thing. Um.
Good for the public to see it too. But all talk is, so we're gonna add some residential target areas. And regional retail overlays to support infill and growth or job growth both. So. Getting a little more into the residential target areas, that is something that supports or it's needed if you adopt a multifamily tax exemption ordinance.
Yeah.
I have worked in two communities that as staff that had those in place. And they're, they're intended for like urban centers. They don't give a great definition of what urban center is, but it can't be on vacant land, that's for sure. So you designate an area and then if somebody. Proposes new development in those areas that like Jason said, you can get a, a tax exemption. It's eight years for just multifamily. Development, that's brand new. If you do affordable housing, it's twelve years, but there's strict reporting requirements. And it's not every single unit, but I think a certain percentage. Certain percentage of the units will be required to be affordable housing, but then you have to like turn and report to the state every year. They'll take that away from you and you only get your eight years instead of twelve.
E- even on that, there's federal tax credits for programs like that too. It's there, they can piggyback.
You can apply for, for fully affordable housing. I don't believe it's the ten percent. I think it has to be afford. Fully affordable housing, but you can apply for federal tax credits.
Yeah, and a lot of those target areas are in our mixed, what you would refer to as mixed use and commercial zones.
The, the RTAs are on this like aerial photo. We did that because it was easier to like look at it and see like where does that end, what street is that? To make sure it was appropriate. And I went through a few different iterations with stats help. Um, this was proposed by, um, a former community development long, long before he left and we just really narrowed and refined it recently.
They were much, they were much larger. Um, some of the things that I opted. I thought were a good idea to take out were like the historic district north of Alder. Um, just because it is primarily a single family neighborhood and it, it, it just didn't seem appropriate to, in, in, you know, encourage. That type of redevelopment in that neighborhood. Um, I, I mean, honestly, I'm still kind of on the fence on some of the areas that are designated purely residential about how effective it would even be. In that zone to have it. I, I think they could be very effective in our commercial zones. Think like Gateway Plaza, for example. That is such an underutilized, you know, shopping center. They, I mean, you could picture it with a couple stories of residential above it. If, if they had some sort of incentive to do that, you know, depending on how we craft these regulations, maybe we could get that kind of redevelopment in there. Where it's largely vacant after hours, you know, it could have some residents living there. That sort of thing.
Yeah, I want to like to see if I. Land use, okay. I want to see how many, I have two slides on land use. Um, but really the big thing is about making sure we understand what's going on with the mapping. So this map. And I think Jason already talked about it. We've got, it's two-sided. One is for colorblind. The other, this is not your zoning map. This informs your zoning map in the future. So if you have something designated as neighborhood residential, your zoning should have. A zoning that is residential. And I know you have more than one zoning district for that. So these are like, like grander in scale. Like a larger look at it. And so it allows you the opportunity to like work within these, um. Categories of future land use of how you want to zone it in the future. So typically a rezone, site-specific rezone will have a requirement that it. It's compatible with your future land use map, but you were thinking about this in the past and that. People will know that, you know what, this could be a commercial area one day. It was anticipated and it's not a big shock. Um, there's still usually public caring on rezone.
Oh, yeah, there's.
Yeah. Um, so basically with this map, we've also done a few other things in here where we've added the overlay zones. Uh, as Jason said, if you decide you're going to have something be an overlay, that will be reflected in your development regulations, but this will accommodate for that to happen. This will set the stage for you to make the changes specifically. So a lot of. Thought has gotten into this map over months and months and it's finally getting forward to you, but it, it kept being refined and people have different ideas about it, but it's. You know, we just have to move forward with it. So once again, it's not a zoning app, but it's just a reflection of how. Folks are anticipating growth. So other things within the chapter itself though, there's a linkage to the housing chapter.
Question about the map, sorry.
Oh yeah, go ahead.
Drag away. I, we've got the downtown residential target area and right outside of that, it looks like it's probably the south side of Turner up to the outside of that. This is, uh, Olympic Highway is. That's a new multifamily target area. Is, is there a reason that we wouldn't want to include that? I know that. A lot of that's going to be big land, but.
It's pretty much all vacant land and. What the concept there is, like, like I said earlier in the meeting, the, the concept is to have it be an overlay, so it wouldn't tie the property owners there to. Do multifamily, but a large amount of that is vacant right now. Um, it's next to, uh. The, are they the Goldsboro Apartments down across from the, um. Nealon Park?
Yes.
And it would allow, right now, what you've got up there is, uh, a bunch of lots and blocks planted in the eighteen nineties. It's in. I forget if it's Needham and Days or Seattle Syndicate. But they're basically identical. They've got thirty by one hundred foot lots, you know, from a bygone time. They prove pretty difficult to develop right now, but one of the, you know, given the topography, it's, it's sloping. It's got access to Turner, Harvard, Seventh. Um, we've always thought it might be a good spot for like townhomes or flat out multifamily. The concept with that is to, you know, allow that as a potential use on that site, but you could still certainly do. You know, what, what the current property owners bought it for, you know, single family residential. Um, we're just trying to find ways in, in my opinion, it kind of. Lightly tests the waters on how this might work. Cause a previous iteration of this map had many more areas targeted for multifamily. And if, if that's the direction the council wants to go, we're perfectly fine with that, but you know. I've been here for twenty years too. I kind of know the neighborhoods, know how certain things might, might or might not be received. So, uh, I think this map. In my opinion, represents a more reasonable area. We can kind of try to craft these regulations, see how they work. In a more, you know, not, not so much right in the middle of a neighborhood, but adjacent to neighborhoods, if that makes sense. Does that? You know, I, when I started advocating for those changes, I mean, I feel like I'm the conservative guy here, you know, and in the approach to land use, but it's, uh. Um, I've only talked to a couple of the property owners on this and they, they seemed very encouraged by it. Just, yeah, that'd be great. We thought that'd be a great site for. Multifamily, especially on the south end of town. Um. So it, it may happen, it may not. Maybe they have a developer that wants to do single family, but, um. Did that answer your question though, about why that area? Just because it is vacant, bound by streets on all sides, generally a one property owner property. There's, there's a few other property owners, but generally speaking, it could be picked up by someone that wanted to do that kind of a development.
I guess I was just curious why it gets tossed into the target area to give them tax extension option, I think.
It says mostly vacant.
It, yeah, it's surrounded by development, but it is all vacant raw land, tree land.
Yeah, and the RTAs are really intended to be for.
Redevelopment.
Redevelopment of existing urban centers.
We, as an example, we had the, a lot of the Hall Equity site designated as an RTA. As another enticement to do something over there, but as we read deeper into the reg, like.
The process for having a multifamily tax exemption ordinances, it's, it's an actual ordinance where. You have to demonstrate that you've met all these state criteria to, like you deem these to be urban centers and these are the reasons why you consider urban center and that. You've designated a specific out, you know, boundary with outlines on your map and. Here's the requirements and it's a whole ordinance process. And then the state's gonna look at it and they're gonna have to approve it. Because the state's gonna be the ones that are issuing the tax exemptions and it's, and that's processed through the county. So once, if you pass it. And it's approved, then the county actually helps implement it to where they remove that tax assessment off of the property owners.
For the improvement for the, for all of the residential. So if it's mixed use and the commercial dump is on the first floor, that would still be assessed. But the, but the.
Yeah. And I've seen it used both for putting on like second, third story housing above existing commercial and downtown areas like little towns. And then I've seen it where in a downtown area, there were still some old single family houses that kind of held out where. Um, the developer would go in and take it down and they would be able to put up like 14 plaques. You know, it's like three stories high and. Try to make it somewhat compatible with the neighborhood, not too excessive crazy, but. Works with the surrounding. Downtown feel. So I've seen it done successfully. And when people in. Any community start doing it and other developers are watching, see if it works, then they, there starts to be more people willing to get in on that. Bandwagon.
We're right at this point, Chilton's a little small for, for that. Bestment, I think traditionally we, you don't see the cost of state cities that are. 10, five, in fact, you know, Tum Water's not really seeing it. Olympia's seeing it downtown. Um, but. You know, it's something that we can entice that. That housing to come.
And when I say it's usually like the local developers, one of the little guys might try it. And then maybe another. The local developers might try it.
When's the last time we pulled them over that campus?
When's when?
Last time we pulled them over that family.
It was the Park Street, the late nineties, before I even started working here. We, we do have the one up off of North Cliff, 42 units that was approved a couple of years ago. That is going through the final stages of building permitting. They kind of put it on hold for a while because of interest rates and. Construction costs, but it looks like they're prepping to move forward with that.
Most developers, it comes down to what the cost is going to be. So if you offer up this incentive, it might draw somebody to try it. So. Just because you have an ordinance in effect, it could sit there for 10 years and nobody does anything, but it could be there on the books as an option.
Yeah, the county had one, right? And I think they had one project built out of it in that time. And I think they're considering renewing it.
All right. So. I mean, there's other things in the land use chapter that are different and like goals that we're trying to achieve. But I mean, really, I think there's just so much interest in the map. Do we have any, is there other feedback or questions about how the math would work or? Do you need more time to think about it? Because this is really just kind of your first introduction to it. Like we said, if we take this to the 60 day. Public comment period, there's still obviously time for council to ask for changes and other.
Just, just cause it's, just cause this gets sent to the state, it doesn't mean we can't change it. If we make any substantive like text changes or things of that nature to actual land use, like density things is apparently that they're interested in, in a lot of senses.
I, I'd just like to find out if you protect our downtown a little bit from, from. County buying of more retail locations and. And making more offices.
Actually, that's an excellent point. One of the things we're proposing in this too, is to, uh, actually utilize a zoning chapter that is, is. Is in our, in the books right now, but not designated anywhere. Um, and it deals with public facilities, the, the public institutional zone. I'm not entirely convinced those. The regulations in there are something we would want to keep exactly as written, but. What am I getting at? We're, what you see on this map are some areas designated that are like city facilities, like our wastewater treatment plant. Um, our, uh, the civic center, our parks, those sorts of things. And county facilities, existing county facilities in the downtown. We were toying with the idea and it shows up in the land use map of designating them public institutional. And that's in my mind, that's meant to encourage. Redevelopment of existing public facilities rather than just, oh, hey, that site's for sale. Let's buy that and, you know, convert it to an office. Yeah. So, and so it would allow a little more flexibility and a little more ease in. Building up.
And I'm seeing there's two colors on the map, but on the screen, they're kind of similar, but. These blue ones in the middle, they're a lighter blue. Those are medical educational uses. And then like the darker blue. Is public institutional. So the thought is to have certain areas of the city just designated. For public slash institutional use so that like, say the county or some other public agency were to want to put a use on there. It would be allowed by right. And then you try to limit.
Design standards. I mean, this wouldn't just be a free call that, you know.
But like, those are the uses that are. Acceptable in that zoning district. And then you'd have it in your use chart or however you've got it to work. These are the uses allowed in this chapter, in this zoning district, and then they're not allowed. And however else you've got the rest of the.
I mean, I would imagine.
Downtown areas.
Currently, our code allows for public uses like offices, um, you know, be it utility facilities, these sorts of things with a use permit. So you have to go through that extra layer of review. You have to show that the use is needed and, you know, all these things. To build a new facility, what it doesn't exactly cover are these, you know, picking up existing buildings and converting them to.
I, I love our county partners, but losing the biggest. Retail building in the city with best parking in the city, the courthouse was just terrible for downtown. So I don't want that to happen again. And I know there's other buildings that are large and.
Yeah, there's, there's some things you could do with your development regs and zoning to make it not quite so easy. To where you're trying to have it promoted for different types of growth economics.
So there's something that we talked about, we wanted a lot of public use things like a. You know, a ice skating rink or a bowling alley or something that the public can all use or a splash pad, all these things we talked about at our conference of planning. Can we set up something like a public facilities district that other places have? Where we recapture some of the state money that's being allotted for public facilities districts. And, um, create its own tax free zone or whatever tax.
That I don't.
That's definitely like a bigger discussion where you could, we could put a goal or a policy to pursue that, but then you would have to.
Next, the next 25 years.
Yeah.
So I would love to see some, someone talk about that. Um, and we've been wanting it for so long. How do we actually get big that come here for Shelton? Well, and the surrounding area and come here and use our recreation facilities and stay here, spend money, get out of their cars, walk around, use our connect the trail that's coming. All those things and make this a destination point to increase our tax base and, and revenues.
Well, I, I mean, you're speaking more broadly like of parks, right? Parks and trails, connecting. I mean. At the end of the day, I mean, this, we can. Money notwithstanding, but we can do that. When I say we, I mean, the city, we could certainly do that. Because in the, like the neighborhood residential zone, for example, the last time we updated it, we made it clear that things like. Public parks and open space and those sorts of things are allowed in that zone. It doesn't mean you can come as a private developer and do it necessarily. But if it's a public facility for public use, you can locate those things in the neighborhood residential zone. There's a process we have to go through to make sure, you know, traffic's accounted for compatibility, all these things. But I mean, we could accommodate that now. But it comes down, I mean, honestly, to money. I mean, that's, that's a discussion, you know, future discussion for. How we would want to handle things.
And we could easily add a policy supporting that in land use, but also.
I think there are.
Be aware that your parks and rec. Element is. In the comp plan, we're just actually referring to your separately adopted pros plan, park track, open space.
Yeah.
And that, I don't even remember the year that was adopted, but that has its own cycle too. So that's something that when you're doing your next cycle, you'll definitely want to incorporate. A, a more thoughtful approach to that and have goals and policies and even some action items around that. Idea, but we can make sure the comp plan complements and supports that too. So you show like, hey, we said we're going to do this in our comp plan. But the comp plan itself. Is just simply saying, hey, we adopt by reference. The existing pros plan. And. We're not really changing the pros plan with this at all. Um, but acknowledging there's.
And on a moving forward basis, I mean, I'm sure we could find ways to make certain things. Easier or, you know, to cite. You know, as we change code.
So the larger question, the public facilities district effect like a government falls in parks districts, junior tax district and all of this.
Potentially it would be, it would be a junior taxing district and depends if you get up to pro rationing where. Valuations really decreased, property evaluations really decreased where you had the senior taxing districts that. Were collecting most of the statutory by five dollars, nine cents statutory limit. Um, we faced that in the early. Whatever 2011, 12, 13 here, when the metropolitan park district was pro rationed down. Oh, by 30 to 40%. So it, it's, if there's one more taxing district, um, property taxes, yeah, it, you could hit that hierarchy. Um, per state law.
But something I read at the public facilities district website was that we could recapture 0.3% of what the states. Collecting from us. Instead of them taking, we could get that if we have public facilities district.
So. I think it's a really good way to recapture some of our state money and all our tax money from outside come here. Um, and I think it's something that we should put on our long-term plan to look about this, talk about this in the future. So recapture some of the state money that's being sucked out, bring it back here. And then when that happens, we'll have a bigger. Amount of, we'll have more things for people to come here to be the gateway to the book box. So, um, I think that we should really put a really strong, not just a paragraph, but a kind of a thoughtful essay of why it's a good idea to come here.
Maybe we could even put something in your capital facilities, you can tell this chapter. And that one's still being refined.
There was a public, public facilities district website on.
I'll look, I'll, I'll get some more information. So credit it gets to 6.5 already collected. Yeah. I don't know that since.
About 0.3%.
Come back to the localities instead of go to the state.
So it's part of 6.5.
And that's 1.2 million a year at current levels. Cause it's around 400,000 per point one percent. I'm not, I might be wrong, um, but. I, I think I saw that on the site.
I mean, if I have something that we can do.
I'm pretty sure we can find a way to put some language in that. Would at least. Bolster the reference to the, the post plan. And then I think it really needs to come from that, you know, because we have a parks advisory board and in the council, of course, but, uh.
But if we don't have it in the plan, then we don't get it. But if we have it in the plan, then we, we have a chance to get it. So I think, you know, something about, you know, broaden aspirational. I think this is something that we could put on there and say, hey, city council. Next council, come at, come in here and study this. Let's have public hearings about what we really want for the public facilities district.
And, uh, you know, maybe I missed, I apologize, I'd step out, but you have funding strategies as. Potential to meet your CIP, right? The parks plan has RCO grants, um, you know, uh, park impact fees, uh, general, general tax collection. There's, there's funding strategies within, within these planning documents. And so certainly the public facilities just can be part of that. I'm looking at MRSC now and there's. This is. You know, quick blush, parking taxes, admission taxes, general obligation, revenue bonds, lodging taxes, county PFDs. Um, state shared sales tax credits. And then user charges and base. So yeah, I'll get a little bit more, um, information to you on. Yeah. Give you the cliff notes version anyway, so you can digest that a little bit and then, uh, and then we can end it down on a future study session.
Something aspirational we can do in 26.
Absolutely. And in. Uh, this is kind of a sidebar, but I think it's important to note, you know, we, we do have all this development, you know, these subdivisions coming in. Our subdivision code requires, uh, you know, and it's based on the level of service in our pros plan. It requires a certain amount of parks and open space within all these subdivisions. But the important thing to note is technically speaking, that parks and open space is private. You know, it's for the subdivision and we, you know, the parks district is a little bit limited in the sense that as much as we would love to be able to. Take these things on, have them be public facilities. I mean, we just can't afford to do that. So it's the, the next best thing is require the parks in new subdivisions. But they could exclude people from other neighborhoods. I mean, I don't know how many subdivisions actually do that. I've been to several private parks, you know, in other areas and in Squim and Olympia and, you know, wherever. But technically they could, you know, so hey, get out of my, get out of my.
I'd like to worry about the problem when the development happens.
It doesn't, it doesn't address regional facilities though. I'll, I'll expand upon Jason a little bit. It doesn't address. Ball fields, trails, water access and things like that. It's, it's the neighborhood park requirement only. So we continue to lack the investment into these regional facilities that are going to get people near our shorelines. On the water access, on regional trails or build ball fields that we might need to expand in the future.
Or even something is, I'll put area quotes around it, as simple as. Of dating Nealon Park, which has a finite lifespan, you know, for that play structure. It's not just a matter of new facilities, but. Keeping the ones we have usable.
Yeah. Uh, so. I often hear from people, you know, Shelton is so restrictive. It's hard to build. So am I hearing that this is going to make it easier? It's going to be a little more flexible or are we tightening? Which direction are we going here?
I would, uh. From my perspective, everything I would envision in these changes, like in the NR zone and in the regional retail, I, it would be easier. It, it might mean, I mean, but it, to be clear, more than likely, we're going to. Be advocating for tightening of our design standards though too, because with increased density, more. Houses on the ground, so to speak, you're going to have more people in your neighborhood. Design plays a big part, you know, and. You know, I get pushed back on that sometimes because people are like, well, you're making it more expensive. All this gingerbread on the house and, you know, all this. I just want to build, you know, a box, but then the neighbor is in my ear saying, why are they building in this ugly box across from my house? You know, so you try to find that middle ground to where it makes a pleasant neighborhood environment, but still achieves. As affordable as we can make it. But I mean, there's still things, water, sewer, traffic impact fees, these sorts of things we have to accommodate. You know, at a certain point. It kind of is what it is if we're going to grow in this matter, but design, I would advocate, I would offer that design. Plays a large part in that, especially when you're densifying, making it easier, but.
Jason, I think, I think where we have the ability maybe to look at that a little more closely is in infill lots, right? Um, maybe not the subdivisions because like, because of the density, because the mass development and design is so important when you're doing that. But. If we can look at infill lots, one-off lots, two lots, three lots that are in, are, you know, already developed neighborhoods. And provide some, some flex, more flexibility there maybe that meet, that meets. The appearance and look within that neighborhood already. Uh, I think we have the ability to.
Really interesting neighborhoods. At downtown, let's say we all know where the EDC is, but then there's that empty lot. What is that fallen? I mean, cause you're in a historical district, yet around the street, you have county buildings, you have the EDC, you rent a library. It's like. What you put there, that's such an interesting area. And so it's kind of hard to tell exactly where that road is on.
That, that, that particular property is just north of the residential target area that, and it's because of the, uh. You know, you, there's a couple, there's some history with those areas. I mean, one is you've got the. Historic districts that, that are, there's two different historic districts that kind of encompass different portions and, you know, this is my way of. Being, being up by the library, the neighborhood north of Alder and kind of, uh. North and northeast of the library back there, where, where we just did all the sidewalks and everything in the paving with the, the sewer project. I mean, just, that was like five years ago, but again, I'm showing my age. That zone you're talking about is a one-off zone only along Alder Street. And the reason it was put there was back in the nineties, very hard fought. Um, it's kind of a very somewhat restrictive transition zone between the historic neighborhood and the development you're talking about. And it. It, people have very passionate views on that. I can tell you, we've several years ago, I think before Mark was even community development director, I think there were some changes proposed to that zone. And it, it met a fiery hostile end, you know, those proposals. It was in, I still have PTSD. But I'm not saying there isn't, isn't really changing it, but it would, I would, it would. You know, it would need input from the, the residents, the historic board, I mean, in my opinion, and figure out. How and what to do there if we do want to loosen things up in that particular location.
Right. Well, and you know, there are some other areas that are, are similar in challenges throughout the community, but that was just an easy one, you know?
Well, and a lot of it, um, I mean, I don't think that property owner has shown much interest in developing it in past years. And I don't know if he's. You know, passing along his properties or anything, but, uh. Uh, I think a lot of what, and I'm, I'm reading into this, but I think a lot of what you're concerned with probably involves infrastructure. So street improvements. Water sewer connections and those sorts of things. And I, I can assure you that our public works department is constantly. We talk about this all the time, you know, as we have these one-off developments come in that we, we look at the code, the way it's written and we're like, oof. You know, that's, that's not going to bode well for this. So we try to figure out ways to make it easier. It's hard to write a catch-all infrastructure code that addresses all these things. So some of the things the public works department has done is initiate, what, what do they call it? The, the.
Design modification.
Design modification request form. And. They use that quite often on these smaller projects you're talking about. And essentially what you're trying to do is look at the code, what does the code want? It wants adequate pedestrian facilities. It wants stormwater, water, sewer. Adequate streets per standard. Okay. It doesn't work in this situation because of slope, because of adjacent development, because of this. Okay. It doesn't work in this situation because of slope, because of adjacent development, because of this, that, or the other thing. So the. Our engineering department works with the developer and they figure out a way to meet the end of the code, meet the intent, the hard intent of it. Without exactly following the exact letter of the law. That makes sense. So it's kind of a, at this point, it, it's there, but it's a belabored process and it takes effort. On both parties. And sometimes we just get people that walk out of the room, you know, we offer that up, no, you guys are so hard to work with. And they walk out and we, we don't even get to talk about it, you know? So that happens. But you, you've got a engineering staff up there that really does wanna work with people, but they've got a responsibility to apply the standards. As the cities adopt them too.
So where does that exactly fall through that particular spot?
That one's more just, I don't think the property owner has shown much interest in that yet.
Regardless, I mean, is that.
I mean, it's, it's a, it's a transition zone. So it's not fully residential, it's not fully commercial. Cause you want those transition zones, much like our CRV now.
You can do residential. I believe it allows even a limited amount of multifamily and you can do light. Commercial. So like office, that's why you see like some of the different offices, um.
Law offices.
Yeah. It doesn't want the heavier commercial. It doesn't want like retail and things like that. Um.
So were they able to perhaps put law from the bottom of parks on top?
I would have to check the zoning, but I think that's a possibility. Don't, don't quote me on that until I look at the code because, because like I said. It is a one off zone that only stretches from second street to seventh street on the north side of Alder to the alley. And in my time here, I think I've done one total permit in that zone. So in twenty years. So I'm not, I'm not the expert on that zone. I'd have to actually read it.
It's, it's fully built out except for that one lot.
I, I think one biggest change is, is the commercial zones and adding those, so they don't have to go through. They're going to be that winners and so it's gonna be faster, cheaper, for them to build apartment buildings.
A little more certainty.
And more certainty.
There's a lot of new housing legislation coming out even now that's. It's, does the community think it's easier or do they hate it? Um, there's, there's allowances now to where you can have. More units per lot without as many requirements and there are a lot, there's a new lot split bill. Um, I've helped some jurisdictions through unit lot subdivisions that were, they were told they had to. And with the unit lot subdivision, it's essentially a form of a short flat. Where you can put a second unit on, on your property. And actually create a separate lot without going through the whole big, long subdivision process. And then they would have ownership as well. And so they're just trying to find quicker creative ways to help create more lots.
Does that apply to us? Do we?
No.
I hadn't heard that one.
No, that's, those are for certain tiered cities and they were mandated to do it by June, but they're, they're allowed. So it's something that the city could look at in the future. And there's a new lot splitting bill and a zero lot line subdivision bill and. Like, how do you want to incorporate in that, in your community or not? And the whole point of the, um. Unit lot subdivision was to allow more density, but with homeownership. You could even take your ADUs and a set, existing ADUs and make them on their own.
So it's not a condo. It's a literal.
It's its own lot.
See, and that would be, that's a, that's an important distinction because you, in Washington state, you can condo just about anything.
But most people don't want.
But it's very, it's a very onerous process and not that many people wanna do it. So.
Since moving to Washington state, oh, we really need to modify the condominium act in the state. Cause it, it's very onerous. Basically the way it's written, anybody who moves into a condo can sue the developer the day they move in or the day after. Because it's so, and I don't know why they haven't focused on that yet, because that would be another form of. Uh, it's kind of like ownership. It's usually like an entry level ownership and.
Yeah, basically you own the airspace.
Inside the unit.
In, in the unit and then, and the HOA owns everything around it. So you all pool in to maintain the grounds, maintain the siding, maintain the roof. But you own the airspace. It's your, so it's weird. It's a weird concept.
What's, what's the new, that's lot size for adding these ADUs? Now we lowered our lot size. Quarter foot, square feet. And so we put an ADU on a lot that small.
Yeah. We, the, the way our code's written is you can do an ADU on any legal lot. So regardless of size, but it doesn't, you still have to comply with development standards, setbacks, lot coverage, design standards. So. Of course, you're gonna be talking about much smaller units.
So if you have like a little tiny house on a lot and you demonstrate you can make the lot coverage, that's usually the big one. Um, if you can make it fit on a site plan and you bring it into your planning department, there you go.
True, right?
It, cities can choose that.
All can, not required.
I was, I was working for a, a community that didn't want it at all and they went with the bare minimum of one or like.
I misunderstood the language.
Tier cities as well, right?
Yeah, let me think about it.
I thought.
The option was.
Well, we'll have it straight when we bring something to you.
It was depending on your tiers. There were some that were even allowing like duplexes with two ADUs. But I think that's where you had some flexibility, like choice.
Yeah, currently our code only allows an A, a single ADU with a single family residence. If you have a duplex. It's not currently an option to do an ADU. That may change depending on how this bill looks.
Yeah. So there's, there's a lot of creative things coming out from the state and some jurisdictions are loving it and some of them are not liking it in the least. And it's like, ah, help me through the bare minimum. Um, a lot of us just about concerned about how neighborhood character. And this is gonna impact our community. It's, we're gonna, even if it's only double the density, that feels very difficult for people to. Have more parking and traffic and congestion. And these are streets that are safe for kids to play on and. They won't be able to do that anymore. And so every jurisdiction handles it differently, but there's things that you can look at with your development regulations. Like once the comp plan is adopted, but you could, you could, if you had more staff, you could work on those now. Do everything, Jason.
But, uh, like one of the things that would be what I would consider low hanging fruit to make it easier to build like an ADU. Like I said before, we already allow them outright, but we still have a requirement for. Two onsite parking spaces for the main house and it, and one for the ADU. So you still have to provide the parking. I mean, a lot of communities are removing the parking.
That's one thing that the state came down. You, you can't require parking for you.
Oh, that, okay. So I just admitted we're breaking the law.
You don't have probably time. I think you have so much time after you adopt your comp plan to.
Yes.
Bring your regulations into compliance.
There's, we, we were considering bringing that anyway.
Is that you can no longer, I don't know if you're already doing this, you can't require the property owner to live in either the main house or the ADU.
We removed that. I thought that.
I know that was like the biggest debate in one of my communities for years.
It was a big one here for about ten years.
Always required the property owner. And then the state's just like, oh, you can't require that.
So that, that requirement came out with the updates, I guess, five years ago.
Actually, it was twenty two. I looked back, it seems like.
See, I was right.
Um, and answer this for me, Jason, permitted ADUs probably the last five years, a couple in the city of Shelton? It's not many.
If I had to guess, I'd say it's less than ten.
I know two right off the, my head for sure.
There's some non permitted ADUs.
I said permitted.
Actually, we're, we're gonna be talking to a few people here shortly.
Yes.
I was just in a meeting this morning.
Fly in one community, but we had proposed this idea of, um, allowing people to come and declare that they had. An unpermitted ADU, but and then we would come out and check it for building code compliance and help them know what it would be to bring it up to standards so that they could. But the council chose not to do that. They just were like, oh, that's just sound so complicated. They. But you know, if you wanna have a handle on how many are out there and make sure they're safe.
And safe, right?
And I'm aware of people living in, you know, sheds that weren't converted properly or they don't have facilities.
Yeah, cause there, there's all these dueling goals. You know, you have the building code, energy code, all these things, the state's constantly updating. So the intent is to have these efficient homes, but you know, it adds cost of course. But it also adds cost to have these holistically inefficient, you know, people converting a shed and having a space heater in there. So it's a fire hazard. It, uh, you know, just sucks energy, cause you gotta have the thing on high. During the winter, every day, all day, you know, to keep it any simple and still livable. So.
You got people hooking up with like power cords to somebody's house for those electric heaters. You got.
Yeah.
They don't have sanitary facilities. They don't have running water.
Yeah.
And we know this is happening, but, um, if you could get some of them permitted and find ways to assist with making them compliant.
And you ever thought about that approach? Never heard of that, but.
It didn't, it didn't win the day, but it was something we proposed. So. There's a lot you can do with how you wanna approach the new housing bills. There's a lot beyond what we've shared that needs to go in the comp plan itself, but would go into your regulations.
Yeah, I, and I was just under the assumption we'd be first, at least considering the lot of them. You know, whether they get adopted or not, that's, that's certainly up to you, but, uh.
Yeah, you guys are not mandated to do certain things that other communities had to do. We learned a lot from those. We did four cities, a middle housing candidates.
Well, you know, we were, we hear. As staff, we, we certainly hear a lot of feedback, especially when we bring, you know, some of these subdivisions to hearing, you know, we'll, we'll hear. What people think of them and the, the density. And on one hand, you know, density sounds great, you know, it's, it's cheaper, it's more efficient, economical. For, for all involved, the, the people building it, the people living in it, for facilities, for infrastructure. It makes it more walkable because you have more in a small space. You can get places easier. Um, but in the same token, you know, by sh-. By our standards, Shelton historically has larger lots than that, you know, a lot of our subdivisions. When I first moved here, a six thousand square foot lot was a small lot, you know, that's, that's the size of my lot on the south end of town. And people, oh my God, you know, you have, you have a tiny lot. Now that's a frankly, a bigger, bigger lot, right? And it, 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 that, that took twenty years to change that, you know, now our standard lot size is forty five hundred square feet. That's generally what you're seeing in all the new subdivisions. So.
And I have a community that they were mandated to do it and that was their minimum lot size. And as soon as they got adopted. The, their man, their, their middle housing ordinance, they did have people coming to apply for more units. We're like, wow.
Well, when, when we changed that ordinance in twenty twenty two, um, we had an existing subdivision, the Coffee Creek subdivision. They promptly, within a month or two, withdrew their previous application with six thousand square foot minimum. Reapplied with a more dense project to get forty five hundred square foot lot. So I mean, it had an immediate effect right there.
Yeah. Stuff to keep in mind. And the other one, the next slide had the RTAs, but you had that in front of you too. So I think we've. That's something you can just let us know, because this is for the comp plan and this is not like. Law or anything, even if you adopt this in the comp plan, when it came, comes down to the RT, if you do your multifamily tax exemption, you'll have to. Clearly define what you want to be your RT, but this is your proposal. Like you know, this is generally where you'd like to do it. But of course, as you guys look at your materials over the next couple of months, let us know. You know, there's a street you wanna cut out of it, cause you don't think it's appropriate or you wanna expand it slightly. Let us know. Um, with transportation, they said you don't have it. Um, I was looking at what's been written so far earlier today. It's eighty eight pages. Um, there's supporting documents. It's not quite ready and the, our planner didn't want it to come out to you guys just yet, but. Um, we do have goals and policies in there that include level of service and concurrency, um, standards and approaches. Um, it, oh, those chapters always have an analysis of your existing condit- conditions. And then your projected future conditions and you're identifying the needs and the safety. So.
I mean, the, the basic gist of the traffic, my understanding is we're, we're not proposing to change any of the level of service. Currently, the city has adopted a level of service D for intersections. That's, you know, you have performance levels A through F. And I think the only exception is Wallace Neeland and Olympic Highway, which is permissible at a level E. So a little drop there. And it's, that's very common for communities, because you know, it sounds all fine to say, oh, we want level of A everywhere. Let's adopt level A. The problem with that is from a cost standpoint, you know, very minor developments would require. You know, major improvements to intersections and stuff. And, uh, I mean, I'll just leave it at that, but we're not, we're not proposing changing any of the level of service standards. To make that clear.
Um, there's recommendations in there for where we would want to, the city would likely need some intersection improvements. It's pretty typical as you grow. Um, recommendations for other modes are required, so they call it multimodal. So you have to look at transit, bicycle and pedestrian, freight, air, rail, marine. So you've just gotta be looking at it holistically, what are all the, uh, transportation options? And then very importantly is also the financial plan. What are potential funding sources? You've got your six year TIP that you do, but this is really about a twenty year look. And then how do you go about implementing it? So that's in there. And then here's just some of the roadway improvement needs. Um, we've only got the two slides. So some of the roads in the UGA, um, or city streets that likely need improvement for mobility are the ones on here. Johns Prairie Road, Paris Boulevard Extension and Olympic Heights, Deegan Road and others. Um, you got your US one oh one interchange with railroad. You just brought up Wall and Neeland, Wallace Neeland, Shelton Springs. Thirty Kensington Shelton, Brockville and Johns Prairie, SR three at Johns Prairie. So just kind of giving you like a little touch of what you're gonna see in much bigger, grander detail with the full plan. And then there would be some recommended design studies and environmental studies, um, specifically to access to Olympic Heights. And then the Coffee Creek area, including the relocation of Deegan Road away from US one oh one and railroad interchange. So when you do these kinds of bigger things, what this is referring to is it typically requires, um. Either some sort of environmental review, either a SEPA checklist or an EIS, but if it's large scale, typically an EIS will be involved and. Um, so it just kind of depends on what developments come to you to propose what needs to be done. And what you're already seeing as areas of concern that you're gonna somehow try to find ways to. Combine funding. Sometimes a city might be able to get funding. Um, they might have some matching dollars and they can get some money from the state and maybe they can combine it with what's happening with a private development. And figure out how to like, do all that work at the same time. And so sometimes you're kind of at the mercy of what the developers are doing. Because like, ooh, that's a perfect opportunity to try to help improve.
And we've.
The other parts are impacting.
As a perfect example of that, with the, uh, um, Olympic Heights development behind the college, they, you know, as it is. As we heard and we knew, um, the intersection of Alpine, Shelton Springs and North Thirteenth during peak periods. Fails currently, you know, it's when the buses are coming through, people are coming and going with their kids from all the schools, letting out at relatively the same time. Um, that developer is putting in a signal at that location, even though, you know, their physical impact on it. Is a fraction of what the total impact is. But there, you know, we have a basically cooperative, uh, uh. Understanding through, you know, the policy for traffic impact fees. They're doing far and above what their traffic would require if you looked at it in a vacuum. But holistically, you gotta have this light at the interchange. So they are gonna get some reprieve on their traffic impact fees. Because they're doing a fix that arguably the city would be mandated to do in the next couple of years as we grow, whether or not they build. If that makes sense. I mean, we're, we're doing these things now. You just don't hear about it as much.
Yeah.
And if that project progresses larger and larger, that could change that impact there and maybe a roundabout be required or.
Yeah. Oh, in the long, long run. Yeah. And that's, that's what you're seeing there on the bottom of the slide, looking at, um. Access to Olympic Heights from like Johns Prairie, you know, looking at feasibility, getting through the port property. Um, you know, and having a, a bleeder, as it were, for people that might be going to Bremert. I don't know why I'm pointing this way. I, I, I feel like I'm looking at a map. I feel like I'm looking at a map and I'm pointing that way. So people don't have to come down through town and exit out to go to Belfair or something. You have a backdoor exit in a way. And same thing with Coffee Creek. That development was done, um, I mean, it's, we're still waiting on the decision on it. But that interchange, the, the new connection at Deegan Road, their railroad and, and one oh one. It, based on Wash Dot's review, the county's review, the city's review, that will work. But initially, even at the word go, when that connection gets made, it's gonna operate at a level of service C. Which doesn't mandate any improvements to that intersection, but what this traffic model showed that is, as the city grows in the next, you know, after Coffee Creek's built out. More people are using that road, more development occurs, that is going to start to be a problem, probably in the next, I, I forget what the timeline is, but twenty, twenty five years. And we're aware of that and, you know, you, this is what the planning is about. We know we've gotta keep an eye on that intersection, work with the county, work with Wash Dot. And more than likely do a roundabout there or something in the future. Yeah.
So I mean. That's what we talked about with, with this cooperative planning, countywide planning policies, because as this development occurs. In, in this case in the city, but the impact is in the county. How do we mitigate that impact in the future if we're gonna annex or if it, if it stays in the county? Because that at some point is gonna have failure points and we need to get ahead of that. If we don't apply our standards. Um, within that UGA.
Yeah.
We're gonna, we're gonna accept or live with some pinch points that existing residents have to, have to.
If I was in the city, dude, we would require that completely immediately, probably.
There, there'd be some, maybe not the intersection, but the road itself would be expanded, would be widened. It's twenty feet in some areas. No pedestrian improvements. Um, so yes, I think our current center would be twenty four feet.
Minimum twenty four.
Full width, curb to curb.
Yeah. So it's, it's things like that. You know, you're gonna have a less than city standard street on Deegan proper. Just because by nature of our standards not lining up.
It's always the fun challenge. Oh, there's a third slide. Oh, there's a third slide, other travel modes. So I talked about this briefly, but we need to address major deficiencies, including ADA noncompliance. I know that's fun for every community to figure out how to upgrade for ADA over the years. Um, with transit, you know, supporting MTA's efforts related to improvements with the bus stops and this, um, improved transit facilities. Um, evaluated the impact of, of the buses on the city streets. To identify locations where MTA support and fixing pavement deficiencies could be requested. I know that came up with our steering committee in particular. Like there's a lot of impact that the buses can cause on the roads that you don't think about in advance and.
Yeah, and they, you know, MTA will change their routes based on, you know, ridership and, you know, I'm sure they, you know, linear miles, I'm sure they try to find the most efficient routes around and where riders are loading and loading. But that doesn't necessarily jive with the way our streets are constructed. You know, we might expect them to go on more major streets where they're going through maybe some residential neighborhoods that don't have a street that can support the weight of the buses rolling over them repeatedly, day after day, week after week, month after month. So it's just, um, ways to try to work with them better because I'm, I'm sure we can get, you know, transit funding to help do things like this.
We just got our ADA plan, right?
So ADA transition plan that was recently adopted by council absolutely.
Oh, did we adopt it? I was going to bring that up. Okay. I thought it was still in development.
To make sure that's mentioned in the.
Yeah.
Man, twenty years, twenty-five million dollars.
Right?
It takes time, that's for sure. Um, and then there's some info in here about aviation and rail, you know, support ongoing efforts. So we just had that discussion, um, about the airport. So we'll have to make sure that's all up to date. I think it likely is.
Yeah, we, we, we have identified it as an essential public facility. I mean expressly in the comprehensive plan. That was like, that was a requirement, I think of the last update that you expressly identify, you know, airports as an essential public facility. It is. We've also adopted essentially their zoning for the site, you know, as, as Miguel had said, it's airport industrial zoning. And if you read that zoning chapter, it really basically relies on the port's master plan to dictate what happens on the airport. So we really don't, we're, we're not restricting them at all, in my view, they, they can.
And it's an important area for fire control and for staging for wildfires. So I think it's really important that we do have an airport, but we'll let you, I'll let you finish.
Oh, that's, that's all very good. I mean, you guys can read this, the rail support port activities to just rail service. Freight, recognizing the importance of higher volume freight quarters in the city and then supporting port activities for enhancing marinas, so. Um, and then.
You can shuffle that.
I know, I keep my slides.
You don't see it on the slideshow, but she's got this floating window that keeps blocking.
It's smaller than that. Um, so housing, which is related to land use, very related. Um, we do mention some of this new legislative, um, some of these changes. We definitely updated the data. We showed you earlier, like the projected population growth in the housing units that would be needed. And so we're just trying to make sure there's stronger connections between housing and economic, transportation and health goals. Um, with the demographics and the needs. Already gave you that, there's a, there's a lot more charts and housing needs assessment that go into income, housing, tenure. Um, so like the age of the housing stock. And then there's a requirement to really discuss like equity in housing and senior housing and discussion on affordability gap. So there's a requirement to talk about housing by income band. So that is, um, something that we're actually doing a few tweaks to right now. So there will be a few edits and we will let you know when those are finished up. Um, so just kind of give a full analysis of all, everything related to the housing market. There's just a lot to consider in there. There's always the concern about affordability. I remember it used to be affordable housing was a scary term that people associated with subsidized or tenement housing. It just means that the regular person that has a regular job can afford to live there and still buy food. And pay their utility bills. And so, you know, making sure addressing affordability for folks, that it's not breaking them. And then they're not one paycheck away from being booted from whatever housing they're in. So we have that housing needs assessment that was conducted and then one of the requirements from the state is to talk about barriers and implementation. So you have to identify what the barriers are to housing and then figure out how you can, uh, uh, address them, like what can you do about it with your, your development code, things we've already been talking about and ways to make it a little bit easier. So a lot of that was with zoning and permitting and then how to partner with other agencies and funding sources and things like that, so.
I'm just glad you mentioned, oh, and we learned another acronym too, ALICE. Asset limited, strained but employed. That seems like everyone here in Shelton. But I think also, um, it's really important that we put on that a lot of us are also, uh, not meeting that thirty-three percent threshold of what we should spend on housing and we're cost burdened. And I think that's a really big thing. And also, our point in time count might be undercounting and not getting all the couch surfers. And there, the housing problem, although it's very prominent here in the plan, I think it's being, undercounted and underreported because we're only dealing with statistics and that's what, what's really going on out there. Like we've only permitted, you know, a couple of ADUs, but we know there are a lot of ADUs out there. So there is a lot of, a lot of, uh, ALICE people out there that we're not fully capturing, um, with our data and stats, but at least that we, we made a really big goal to at least put it on paper. That are, a lot of our residents are struggling and that fifty percent of the units here in the city are rentals. But there's nothing really for multifamily rentals and lot and apartments on the seventh street are thirteen fifty per, uh, not even, not even a one bedroom. It's, it's, it's a studio. And, you know, I had a, a friend there who lived there, his name's Ray, shout out to Ray. Um, he had to move, he was a TBI disabled person. And he had to move and then shortly after he moved, he perished. Because when you, when seniors are, you know, leaving their homes that were, they were comfortable there for a few years, that shock of getting displaced really affects your health. Um, I also had another friend talking about how expensive it was to live here in Shelton. There were no other rental units available, no matter where they looked and, you know, thank, shout out to Crossroads who helps, you know, try to find people's stuff. But, and also they're the only emergency shelter account for families. But there, the residents live there far longer than what we envisioned them living there as an emergency unit. So, um, I, you know, I think we're underrepresented about how drastic the housing shortage crisis is. Um, and I know we, we put it on here on paper, but it, I still think it's under, being underreported and I just wanted to.
I think we all agree.
Highlight that, um, a little bit better.
You know, we could put some language in there about that because we go with the data that's reported, but know that there, you know, even, the state has like a certain methodology for calculating every year. I don't know, probably your department has to submit all the building permits that are turned in and they come up with these projections. And they also do the census data, the census, but we know not everybody's reported on the census by any means and, so there's just so much that's truly unaccounted for and there's folks that are afraid to like, you know, respond to the census.
We work with the best numbers we can find and I understand what you're saying.
Yeah, you, you do the plans based on the numbers you have, but you know what's happening locally in your county and so you're trying to find ways to, um.
By no means is this an accusation that we're doing.
I know, yeah.
Saying that, um, in my, it's kind of underreported.
Yeah.
We did, that is only good is what you get. We went to have real estate, uh, the other thing, where they said our average seven fifty here and now. That's we know that. Everybody, everybody, you just like go.
Like what?
Our average what?
Average rent for one bedroom is seven fifty.
For like a room in a house, maybe, maybe.
Baby.
Probably not, but.
See, I mean, that's just unfortunate, but that's why we can.
It's.
Start, continue to pursue.
It is frustrating.
Yeah. Um, so historic preservation did not really change much. It was really just kind of.
We basically updated the numbers. It was, it was inaccurate on the number of, uh, you know, we'd add a few homes to the local register. And that was really it.
Yeah.
To that, we had this historic board look at it and they were, they were happy with the only way it was written.
I think we kind of restructured how, we might move some of them around to be in different categories, but they're all the same golden policies, so. Um, yeah, minor wording and clarity edits. Um, retain Shelton's timber mill area heritage narrative that was already in there. A lot of times somebody, once upon a time wrote parts of these chapters for historic preservation and, they're usually typically somebody from like the historic preservation, um, board and.
Honestly, it's been carried over since, uh, at least the ninety-five plan. And that's, our historic board was first formed in the early nineties, so I'm, I'm assuming it was probably Tracy Mur, something like that wrote it. And it's, it's great. I mean, why change it?
You've got.
Accurate.
You got your, your local government's certified local government status, which is always great to have that already. Your, your roles that you've got, so it, yeah, it's essentially the same. And this last bullet, community efficence reinforces continued public support for historic preservation is a core city value. And that's great. There are some communities that don't support historic preservation, so as long as you've got that, that support for it, you just want to keep that. Um, and then sure, okay, so I didn't give this to you in the chapter, but the shoreline is pretty much the same. We already discussed it. Um, we just updated the most recent shoreline master program. And we've been reformatting the whole comp plan.
Yes.
That just means the way it appears on paper.
And there are some still formatting oddities in here. I'll openly admit that. I mean, when I flip through it, you're like, oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Always looks different when you print it, so that, that'll all be cleaned up by the final.
Yeah, and most of it's actually in the newer version. Just different formatting and then we're going to be adding pictures to it that will help make it look a little nicer too.
Yeah. So one comment on the shoreline, and I don't know exactly where, well, page twenty-nine, goal P eight. And it says P eight policy and the policy P eight B are being deleted for the comprehensive plan and I really want to keep that in there. I really want to make sure that we have.
What do they say?
It's about, um, the city, the P, goal P eight is the city will work to provide access to water for recreational uses, while recognizing the need to ensure climate resilient infrastructure and access planning that accounts for sea level rise drought, shoreline erosion and fluctuating water levels.
I think it got moved to climate. There were several that we didn't want to repeat.
Okay, well, if I don't want to delete it, I want it highlighted that we need to have waterfront access for our residents.
Yeah, what he was saying is that we, I believe that's when it got moved into the climate chapter.
Okay, so it's not deleted, it was moved.
Yeah, so that's one of the things I was going to point out. So even the chapters you're getting now, we are going to do another, a final scrub. We might move some of them into climate and pull it, they won't go away, but they'll be moved, but we're like, well, we might want to keep them in two chapters, but we're trying to decide.
Yeah, we.
Where.
And I'm, I, I, now this is reminding me that I'm on the hook to look at the climate element again because, if you read through the climate element, it'll talk about, um, you know, this, this occurs somewhere else. We recommend moving it here. I've still got to go through and weed all that out. The intent isn't to remove that from the comp plan. We're just trying to figure out where it better fit.
That's the state guidance is to like move goals and policies from some elements to the climate element, but I'm not necessarily sure. Sometimes I like it being in the housing chapter because you're reading the housing chapter and it's related to climate, sure, but it's still applicable to housing. So we'll have a discussion about whether we want to move them or not, even though it's state guidance, we might not do that.
I just want future councils to always revisit.
Yeah.
Why don't we have waterfront here in Shelton? And that's the biggest question I always hear and it's like, oh, well, if we have a waterfront here in Shelton, I think, housing valuations might go up a little and people might want to move here. And people would, might want to have more built here and to, to have that waterfront access, so. Um, like, and that's always been on every comprehensive plan that we've gone through was having a waterfront access. I want to make sure it doesn't disappear. And that we keep, uh, future councils on this goal to have waterfront access.
It remains a goal within the pros plan as well.
Yeah.
By reference here, we, we know that the community has, um, valued trails, neighborhood parks and water access. The top three categories for twenty-some, thirty years, so it remains as part of the pros plan's priorities as well.
I want to make sure it's not deleted.
Eagle, Eagle Point, that's the only option really.
We own, on Oakland Bay is, that we own, that Eagle Point at its point, yes.
We've, and we've, we've got some options on Goldsboro Creek. I mean, of course, they'd have to be developed that takes, you know, that takes planning, that takes, you know, money, construction to make them safe, all that good stuff.
So there's a typo on here. My, my bar is covering up, this is, we, we did include the climate chapter, but not the shoreline element. We just made a mistake with that, that graphic in there. So I was like, what? We didn't give you that today. We didn't. It's just the graphics wrong, but, it's the climate resilience chapter. This is just some, this is a summary of what's in the climate element. Because there's not a comparison of what you had before, because you didn't have one before. And so that was, um, done in response to the new climate bill requirements, the Climate Commitment Act.
Um, and the state's very specific on what we need to consider in there and it's, uh.
They have these tools that they created, so they, they worked with U Dub to help create these. What are you wanting to say?
I, I don't see the, the, I've said this so many times, um, I don't see the element as being much for, us to implement immediately, what I think the state's goal here is, to get communities thinking about it, start to kind of assess where your vulnerabilities are. And make no mistake, in the coming years, I'm sure they're going to start requiring more of us, but this, this is like a good first assessment. You know, where are you vulnerable? What are, you know, what are your community's needs and, uh, you know, in the future? That, that's kind of the way this works, you know, you, you start slow and it starts ramping up, just like with our critical areas ordinances. When I first started working here, we still had our first critical areas ordinance, which was the model ordinance adopted, you know, that the state gave out to everybody to adopt. And it was pretty lacking, right? So that, that's how they got the, the foot in the door in the early nineties and then come two thousand and six, we did a complete overhaul and it's still the ordinance we're largely using today. You know, just to come up to current standard. So they start slow, ramp up.
Yeah. Um, so with the planning process of it, with these tools the state created, there's, it's a climate housing workbook that you have to work through and you, you first identify the assets you have in your community. And then they've got like eleven different, um, hazards to, to compare against your living assets. And you go through this whole process of analyzing it and, this mapping tool that you can go online, you're supposed to be able to zoom in on your city. And then you click on like, say it's agriculture and like, well, what are the impacts of high heat or flooding or this or that? And like, you can come up with like five hundred different scenarios of what could happen, but that's why you meet with the steering committee and like talk about what's really happening.
I didn't find it very useful.
No, but we. Prior to fill it out and turn it into the state, like you did this exercise, but really it facilitates conversation.
Yeah.
That's the helpful part.
And, and like I said early on, the conversation is what struck me because all the things, me as, you know, the land use guy, that I thought were the priorities, it turns out it was, remember Eric, when, when they got ranked, mine are like on the bottom. And I'm like, well, actually that kind of makes sense because we are, we do stormwater, we, you know, we are prepared for flooding. I mean, in, in a sense, we know what to do when king tides come and a lot of rain. We don't know what to do when it's hot out, you know, duh.
Yeah, so it's a really good conversation to figure out what everyone considered to be the actual risks here in Shelton. So then we also went for, you know, what are the vulnerabilities and then what are the strategies? Um, to, you know, for resilience to combat those risks and vulnerabilities. So these key focus areas are flooding, wildfire, extreme heat that we brought up earlier. And you can impact those through infrastructure upgrades, land use controls, emergency readiness. So that, this is just really high level. I mean, you got the whole chapter. Um, and it prioritizes protection for the vulnerable populations. You know, some of the folks we were just talking about not even be able to find housing and the senior person that was booted out of their housing. Or they couldn't afford anymore. Um, and then how do you line it with these other chapters, these goals, you know, related to climate resilience? Um, with housing utilities and transportation, something that comes down to good transit to help people get to, housing that we need. That's where we are introducing the idea of multifamily, um, zoning overlays. So that you can have ideally, you know, if you're having multifamilies because it's more dense and ideally more affordable, for more people, because you just don't have a whole lot here right now. So if you can create more housing stock period, that itself usually brings prices down. And a healthy vacancy rate is five percent. I haven't looked at yours recently. Did you hear, or he's one of the recent, who, who went to the meeting that said there was seven hundred and fifty dollar.
We heard there was no, there was, were no rentals.
Yeah, so I mean, that alone speaks a lot to why I think they're so expensive.
Yeah, they're terrible, terrible. It was out of area and so out of date that they couldn't, I don't know why he even brought it up, quite frankly.
Yeah, so there's, this is where the comp plan can be a holistic view at, addressing, challenges related to the people that live here for providing, um, housing and transit options and safety and things that make them, part of the community where they are well cared for. So, I mean, in their own homes, but have the things that they need. Um, and then we've got an implementation. Um, and then we've got an implementation framework that gives some direction on how to coordinate funding opportunities. And then how you can integrate climate goals across other city plans in the future. And like we said, it's not really climate, that's the term. Sometimes the term climate change gets people off on a tangent. But we, we're just focusing on like what's happening on the ground here. So I think. Yeah, so next steps, we're having this meeting today, we had. Held this one a little bit later, there's just some changes in staffing. And then that's totally fine. Um, we're going to continue to make some refinements, but Jason does want to come back to your next meeting to talk about, hey, can we get the go ahead to just start the sixty day commerce review? In the middle of the sixty day review, give me a second. Um, we're going to also start the thirty day review of the environmental impact statement. So we did some scoping on like months ago.
Yeah.
To say, hey, this is what we're going to analyze for environmental, um, for the environmental review. We got some feedback that changed it up a little bit based on the feedback. And so those two will go forward and then when that's all done, well, we anticipate getting feedback and maybe needing to make some changes. We bring it to you. And then we would have a public hearing and for adoption. Now, given the sixty days that are required, we're anticipating adoption in January.
That's fluid.
Yeah, it's just would be really difficult to get it done in December at this point because of the sixty day noticing. Well, it's a requirement. I was going to address that, you know, I was like, should I even put this in here? But I want to be realistic.
Yeah, yeah.
You basically already got reimbursed for you, from the state for your grant and if we demonstrate to them that there's some. Uh, unanticipated changes in staffing and some other things came up and that we're, we're heavily working on it, it's going through their process, they've got it. They will be okay. They're not going to penalize the city.
We, we ran into a frankly, a identical situation back with the last comprehensive plan update. We had some staff changes right at the tail end, kind of like this and we. I'll be honest, I mean, similar situation. I took it over, didn't want to move forward with something I didn't fully have my head wrapped around, so pushed it off for. A couple of months. While you read everything, ask questions, figure out why, how we got to these points, then we move forward. We ended up adopting that, I, I mean. Five, six months behind schedule.
I want to understand, it's been common.
I mean, that's not the intent, but I mean, I'd love to say, I, I just don't think it's feasible to do by December and I don't think you guys would want to. Try to get through it that quick. I don't.
Like rush, I know, you would have, it would have to be a second meeting in December and I'm pretty sure you're not having that, but even then.
Well, we haven't decided that yet. I mean, we're willing to do that, but I think for the sake of, of having a fully informed council, having a, a, a transparent public process. It's worth wishing it back.
Like to bring to you, like if we get comments from ecology or fish and wildlife and they make requests that we make changes, that we. Come to you with full knowledge of like, these are the changes we made from what. We presented to the Department of Commerce and this is the final version that we want to present to the public in a public hearing and then you guys have your.
And after the fact, so even after the sixty days, even after our process, we still send the plan to Commerce, the final plan. They can honestly still have comments after that as well. You know, that, we had some very minor ones come up in the last iteration, so.
It's a very interesting process in the state. I was in Colorado for nine years and they're this. They're, they just encourage you to adopt new complants and ours was like twenty years old and they're like, hey, you should have, you know, update that. They didn't give out grant money to help you do it and it was.
This is a lot, fifteen months now we've been doing this.
At least. Yeah, it's been.
Two last things, Eric, I want to leave the words with it to our staff and, and S C J. Mason General.
Oh, yeah.
We got to do a word search on that.
And Kioti should be the horizons.
Actually, that.
It happened at least twice.
Yeah.
We had that where we fixed it for.
Yeah, you fixed some of them and I was like, oh, okay, but we did talk about it at our comprehensive plan meeting.
Yeah.
And I just wanted.
Which chapters did you see that in? Because.
I think it's in housing and land.
Probably changed it in economic development only, um, but well, what was the other one?
Faces, health, hospitals, like, well, let's face it, you know. Yeah, but that's, that's it. And that, I, I just want to thank you for the process and.
Yeah.
Uh, allowing us to add and complicate it more, but all the little things that we added and that, that we threw out our comprehensive planning, I think. We, our group was a lot, when I observed the counting process, I'm like, ew. And I, you know, here in the city, I thought it was a lot better and ran more smoothly and we were more broad and aspirational and not trying to. Dictate every little thing in, in the plan. So, um, I just want to thank you for not only including the younger folks and the scientists and adding more people to the mix. But also um entertaining our extra, you know, things that we were bringing in and. Um, helping me out with, uh, you know, getting everything printed instead of me looking at a screen. So, and so the feedback was better. You know, although more cumbersome, but thank you for making the accommodations and thank you for working with us and. This was actually a joy to work with and learn about all the details and how hard it is to run a city. You can't just slap a house down and say that's good, but we have to think about all the impacts that would hap, that happens when we do decide to build something. In the city limits. So just once again, thank you so much for all the hard work and, uh, from Jason for taking over and, uh.
Yeah, I, I'd have to, you know, I think I'd be remiss if I didn't mention, you know, former director, Jay Hill, I mean, he, he. Ran the process you're talking about for a large portion of the time. I just. Came in after the fact and take the credit.
Steering committee.
Yeah.
Um, the volunteers and the steering.
Oh, yeah, they were great. It really was.
For being on that committee.
The, the steering committee was a great group, a lot of, a lot of surprising conversation, you know, a lot of, and it's what the process is for, to be honest, because. You, you can tend to be in a bubble in my world sometimes, you know, you're always sitting behind your desk talking with, you know. People like Kirsten and stuff, so you're in this planning bubble and then like the, the high schoolers we had in the meetings, sometimes they would just come up with these brilliant perspectives on stuff. And I'm like, wow, I never, I never even thought about that. That's great, you know, you're writing this stuff down. So it was, it was fun, you know.
Yeah, thank you. This has been great. I appreciate it. Not at this time.
All right, any order in today's session at seven thirty P M? I'd watch the clock.
You didn't want to extend it, did you? I know Mark wanted to ask you something about.